I'd like to call the Thursday, July 30th, 2020 School Board meeting to order. How, member Perkin, please say your role call.
Member Perkin, present. Member Perkin is present. Member Kettow?
Present.
Member Kettow is present. Member Olson?
Here.
Member Olson is here. Member Rico?
Present.
Member Rico is present. Member Tyson?
Here.
Member Tyson is here. Member Peterson?
Here.
Member Peterson is here. And member Lee is here.
All right. With that, could we have a motion to approve tonight's meeting agenda?
So moved.
Second?
A motion and a second, any discussion? Hearing none, no opposition in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Moving on to number four, new business, return to school discussion and planning. Dr. Lask.
Thank you, Chair Peterson, and board members, thanks for making the time available for a special meeting. I think we clearly have a critically important topic in front of us. I'd like to also acknowledge and welcome anybody who's watching online and appreciate your interest in this important topic. I've got a series of slides I'm going to share that will detail all the some planning that we've engaged in over the summer and information that we received this afternoon from the Minnesota Department of Education and the governor, walked through some concepts and frameworks for the start of the school year, and ultimately asked for your approval and support on a recommendation. But before I get into my slides, I want to take just a quick moment and acknowledge what it would come from March 15th to today. From March 15th to the end of the school year, we're all fully aware that we were thrust into a distance learning model for op-ed statewide and certainly across the four sub-schoops. And the engagement of our students, our families, our parents in making that system work is beyond imagination and incredibly impressive. I know and we acknowledge the strain that that put on our families. We acknowledge the difficulty that presented to our kids and the loss of connection that they had during the time with their teachers. If you think about high school kids and especially our seniors and middle class activities and interactions, although I would say what we provided for graduation at the end of the year was really quite remarkable. Bottom line is, it was a real challenge for the families and for our kids. But I also have to acknowledge that our staff across this school district, March 15th to the end of the school year, held off an incredible feat and an incredible task with almost no time to plan. The level of investment, effort, strength that they put into making those connections, far from what they would want in in-person learning, but they were dealt with really difficult challenges. And they stepped up, every step of the way, with full effort and full engagement and passion to make learning work. And I just want to acknowledge our staff across the system that delivered meals, provided transportation, provides floor handing out learning materials, and teachers who woke up every day to face a new challenge trying to reach their kids. So congratulations to our staff and our system for that work. But now we get to move forward now through the summer as we begin to stare down the start of the school year. And clearly, the start of the school year will need to be different than the start of the school year, than the last spring. And in anticipation of the start of the school year, we were asked by the Department of Education to spend time this summer building out models, the three different models that were potential models for the school. Full in-person learning, scenario one. Hybrid learning model, scenario two. And full distance learning, model three. Accounting for student family support, of course academics, accounting for building operations, then educator support and professional learning. To do this planning and do this work, we put together a thirty-member planning team that met across those days up through now July 28th. And we've got a number of planning days scheduled coming up next week, the 13th, 18th, and 24th of August. And this team was comprised of parents, students, teachers, pedro professionals, food service, transportation, district nursing, administration, and school board. The amount of detail that this group has dug into and have used that detail to begin to formulate plans is really quite impressive and allows us tonight to begin to look at, now with guidance from the governor, how we might begin to think about and plan for the start of the year. So I'm excited tonight to be able to share in alignment with the governor and Minnesota Department of Education, Minnesota Department of Health, how we might consider opening for the fall of 2020. Our timing work and our efforts to open the school year are driven by a set of priorities. First and foremost, to deliver exceptional learning that also adheres to health and safety guidelines. And quite honestly, to maximize to every extent possible in-person learning for our students. Of course, to keep students and staff safe and healthy. Equity and making the learning work for all kids regardless of resources to account for all those needs for students. Of course, regular and effective communication with our parents, our staff, and our students. And I think we all understand the need to be flexible throughout the rest of the summer and as we start the year and work our way through the school year to meet the diverse needs of our students and staff. Our planning process was a two-team structure, again, fully planning out the three different models. The collective role again was to prioritize student needs throughout, through an equity lens. Staff needs were also extremely important with safety being the most important staff consideration. Input again, parents, students, staff. And we had survey information, the beginning of our spring distance learning and at the end, that provided new valuable data from our parents, our students, and our staff. And early on in the summer and throughout the summer, we've been given guidance, planning guidance from MBE, MDH, and the CDC. So today, the governor, as many of you listened and watched, provided some guidance for school districts as we begin to think about starting this school year. I will share all the information in the slide, but I'll share three critical slides that are germane and critical to our planning. First is that we go through and work through a series of steps as we look at which model is most appropriate to start the school year. With the first step being Minnesota Department of Health using data from counties to determine the basis of learning models for public. We aren't just going on a whim here, we are being driven by COVID cases in the counties in which we operate our schools. And that would be, of course, Washington, Chisago, and Ananobe. Minnesota Department of Education sharing county data and the consulting process for public schools to engage with education and public health experts to review their county health data and safe learning plans. Step three, public schools with their incident command team, which will be, in which for us is our steering team, which is a subset of the planning team, will evaluate their ability to implement required and recommended health best practices. And step four, public schools, in consultation with public health, will determine a learning model to begin the school year and communicate that decision with their school community. And we're beginning that process tonight. And public schools and MDH will monitor the community and school level impact of COVID-19 on a regular basis. Again, they need to be fluid, nimble, and flexible as we approach the year and through the year and work our way through the year. And adjustments, we believe, will need to be made to the learning model as we get into the year and through the year. Today, provided by the governor and Minnesota Department of Health and Minnesota Department of Education, provides a fairly simple formula for analyzing COVID cases in our respective communities. And that formula would be the total number of positive cases in a fourteen-day period of, within a population of 10,000 within a respective community. So positive cases out of 10,000 within our respective communities. That creates a positive rate that then gets filtered into this set of parameters. So based on that metric, positive cases per 10,000 residents in a community. If that number results in zero to nine, MDH and MBE and the governor would permit in-person learning for all students. If the positive cases is between 10 and 19, the parameter and recommendation, the guidance, would be in-person learning for elementary students, hybrid learning for students in grade seven through 12. If the positive case numbers in our counties results in 20 to 29, they would recommend hybrid learning, elementary and secondary. If the positive case counts are 30 to 49 within a county, they would recommend and guide toward a hybrid learning elementary student for elementary students and distance learning for secondary students. And if the number is 50 or greater, distance learning for all students. So we now have a metric and parameters that were guided decision-making in consultation with MBE and MDH. So what does it look like currently in our three respective counties? Based on the fourteen-day period, July 5th through July 18th, that count would be 15.54 in Ananobe County, 5.85 in Chisago, and 14.84 in Washington County. And you can see that based on those positive case counts in our three counties, we would fall in the in-person learning elementary and hybrid learning for secondary. I would point out, however, that 15.54 is not far from 20. So we're, it's edging toward hybrid learning all students. That currently, we're at the in-person learning, elementary, hybrid learning, if that's where we decide going. Yes.
Where are, most of our students are in Washington County, correct?
That's correct. Yep. And one of the critical questions and early questions we're getting is, well, if we have relatively to our district, fewer students in Chisago, and Chisago numbers spike, would that drive the decision for the district? It was clearly stated today from the governor specifically that these are guideposts and that we would have the ability and capacity within MDH to look at our district as a whole and not as a subset or an ingredient based on a small part of a particular county or one school in a county. So again, these are guideposts, not rigid parameters, but guideposts to help planning and guidance for districts. Given the fact that our current numbers would place us in an in-person learning for elementary and hybrid for secondary, I want to take some time and share with you the planning work from our planning team, whether we start in-person learning elementary and hybrid for secondary. So my next set of slides will begin to show some of the high-level detail that would guide planning and our learning in these different levels. So in-person learning for grades, early childhood education to the sixth grade, because we can, we certainly identify case sets, but we also need to include early childhood, which has been a growing problem for four or five-year-olds. Again, in-person learning for students in grades case sets. Students in early childhood programs would receive daily in-person instruction as well. And that there would be full distance learning action available for students who prefer or need a model of this type of learning model. So a distance learning model would be available for any student who would prefer a distance learning model versus in-person model. And we would, we would provide both actions and fully staff and run those models. Let's take a quick look at, from our perspective, what the benefits of in-person learning for grades E6 would be. First, an ability to keep students in classroom groups with minimal contact with other students. And then one of the different different differentials between elementary and secondary is the ability to contain groups of kids, so there's little, limited interaction with large numbers of kids. I think you can see that at the elementary level, the ability to contain a classroom for much of the learning day adds a power to all elementary kids. At the secondary level, with class schedules changing seven times a day at the middle school, five times a day at the high school, kids are exposed to and exposing themselves to hundreds of cases throughout the day. So I think that is a large driver to the differential between secondary and elementary. The ability to, the benefit of in-person learning is the ability to assess learning loss that occurred in the spring as well as current learning needs. Distance learning is more challenging, I think we would agree, for students in elementary, especially early elementary grades. Maybe to transition to some level of distance learning later in the year, an in-person learning allows for the opportunity to create early connections and relationships for kids. If we are going to need to move to the hybrid at the elementary level or distance learning based on case counts, having those early relationships established through in-person learning is absolutely essential. If we have the opportunity to be in-person learning, there's great value in the opportunity to assess where kids are at, give them their learning needs, develop learning plans for kids, and establish those important connections, whether it's full in-person or a hybrid learning model. And according to recent reports, and was stated from the Health Department today, risk of infection and spread of COVID-19 is lowest among young learners. So I'll take that science from the Health Department and that was shared again today. Let's take a quick look at the hybrid model for grades seven through 12. A hybrid model would be an alternating, based on our planning, from our large planning team. We developed an alternating in-school and out-of-school learning model on an A-B rotational schedule. So let me just kind of flesh it out, there's a couple of slides further will give us more detail. Essentially, we would create a maroon and gold camp, a, with code campus school calendar with maroon days and gold days alternating every other day. Students would be assigned to a maroon cohort or a maroon day and/or a gold day. And we would divide that evenly at the best we could, 50/50 scenario based on afterday. We have, there are some families that have different last names in the same household, and we would do our, we'd do everything we could to accommodate the same learning day for those families. And we'd just do that one by one by with families. So in addition to an every other in-person with hybrid learning or ad hoc learning, would be much like the elementary model, a full distance learning model available, would be available for students who prefer or need that level of that type of a model. So again, in addition to hybrid, there would be the option in grades seven through 12 for families to elect into a distance learning model that their needs does. The hybrid model, as I indicated, the middle school and high school students would change, they change classes multiple times throughout the day, which creates a real challenge for large groups of kids. They have 2,000 kids at the high school, 1,000 kids at the middle school. Hybrid model reduces that number in half and significantly reduces the interaction and connection and potential spread among students. Reducing the number of students in school by one-half reduces student interaction and risk again. Staff are exposed to fewer students on a daily basis. In-person learning allows for the opportunity to create connections and establish strong teacher-student relationships, to better support students in the event that we need to transition to distance learning later in the year. Again, taking advantage of low case counts and then taking advantage of the opportunity to have in-person face-to-face learning for several times. Independent learning is more manageable, is a more manageable task for middle school and high school students, especially with the use of Canvas as our learning management tool. Again, distance learning is a challenge, especially for our youngest learners. According to recent reports, as was, as was shared and filled out today with the Health Department data, risk of infection and the spread of COVID-19 is higher for adults, tons the need to reduce the number of cases. What might that model look like on a rotational basis? Again, on a maroon cohort and a gold cohort, there would be in-school learning days and out-of-school learning days. Of course, in-school learning days are opportunities to interact directly with their teacher around the learning. It may not be lecture and then go home and practice. There may be flipped lessons on the distance learning day where they're exposed to the parent set. And then when they're in person, students are interacting with their teacher around the learning in a practice or lab kind of setting. There's been a number of teachers flipping lessons for a number of years and we would continue to use that type of setting. Distance learning would, distance learning days would not be under the hybrid model, a way in which we expect kids to advance their learning. In other words, it's a time to prelearn in preparation for in-person learning, practice what was done in the classroom, or enrich what was done in the classroom. And you can see what the rotational schedule might look like. The hybrid plan will be an every other day rotation again. School calendar would be coded. And I would point out that we will be coding our calendar regardless of the model we start the year on, as maroon and gold. And every student in the next couple of few weeks will be assigned to a maroon day or a gold day. If we start the year in-person in elementary and need to move to a hybrid at some point, those days will be identified and the day on which those students come to school or stay at home will also be identified. And we'll do that pre-work upfront. Class under the, at the 712 level, so let's be clear, this is 712. Classroom teacher will continue to provide lesson support for students who are absent due to illness or need to quarantine, or those students will choose a full distance learning model. Again, the Canvas tool and the platform on which we build learning and provide learning will serve kids in distance learning as well as kids coming to our school. The learning emphasis in person, again, now this applies to if we proceed where we fall today on the metric. Out-scheduled courses would be maintained for each student. So middle school or high school students will get a school schedule, whether in distance learning or a hybrid learning, and they would follow that schedule. The at-home learning days will incorporate opportunities for students to reinforce the learning from the previous day, extend their learning, and or do pre-work for tomorrow or the next day's lesson. The companion distance learning program, again, pointing out that this would be for 7th through 12th grade at this time. A full distance learning action again being available. If we were to go to distance learning at some point, I'll just share this detail from the planning team. Again, this is not to suggest that we're distance learning elementary, but if we were, full distance learning students would be assigned to a distance learning teacher who will provide instruction for the duration of the distance learning. So at the elementary level, if we are in person, those families that lack distance learning, they will be assigned to a distance learning cohort of kids and teachers. And they will get the rich instruction and learning that they would get if they were coming in person. There's a lot of detail behind what that would look like, but for the sake of staying in a framework concept for this presentation, we'll leave it at that for now. For the middle school and high school students, who would be in the distance learning program? As I mentioned before, they would have a schedule, like they were coming to school on a regular basis. And they would be assigned to their classroom teachers if they were coming every day, that they would access and do their learning in a distance learning format. Supported through the virtual learning by way of Canvas, our learning management tool. Attendance in grading under the, this concept, for in-person learning, attendance is based on evidence of engagement in learning activities during at-home learning days. For, actually, this would be for the 712, as we're talking 712 on the highway, that their attendance on those days would be determined based on evidence of engagement in learning. Typical grading system will be implemented at the elementary, middle school, or high school system. Letter grades in the earlier grades, number grade in, or letter grade, number grade, I'm sorry, number grade in the earlier grades, letter grade in the after grades, middle school and high school. You'll recall last year, we went with a pass, no pass essentially, and an elective action if kids won the letter. The letter grade would be our standard grading basis. Member Luther has spoken previously about the need to sustain, maintain, litter throughout our system. I think we would all agree. And our grading system is a way to reflect that same standard, level of standards and expectation level. Shallow care at the elementary level would run much the same as it would during typical school year for an in-person model. Psychosonic before and after school programs would remain the same and be a P-based program. Again, the in-person model, kids are coming to school every day, and Psychosonic would be available before and after school as in the typical school year. Our planning team spent a lot of time talking about staff and student wellness and health, office configurations. We will consult regularly with MDH regarding local case data. I'll point out that Trisha Kazubi, one of our district nurses who's here tonight, is serving as our COVID contact representative and specialist, if you will, who's got direct contact and relationship with MDH. So she's working closely with our response teams and our steering team. Implement MDH and CDC health protocols. Checklist to be conducted at home before leaving for school. There's been questions that I mean, whether or not we would temperature check kids as they came to school. The answer would be check kids as they came to school. The answer would be no, given the manual of cases that would need to be temperature checked. But following these guidelines, we would, all families would be given a set of guidelines that ask them to make sure they follow them. Of course, we're engaging with kids at the classroom level and as they enter the school. And if kids do not feel well, or they don't look well, we will be directing them to the health office where they will be given care and their, their health will be assessed. Require students and staff to stay home if not feeling well. Establish a process to implement proper safeguards to handle suspected COVID-19 cases to minimize risk of transmission. And those processes and guidelines are very explicit on M D E, M D H website and provided for schools, and they provide direct resources for schools. When and if there might be a positive case, we will have direct contact to consult with M D H folks on how to proceed with contact tracing or the need to have staff members or student pointing or expanded groups of kids who may need to be present. Establish your COVID-19 system, symptom area separated from the area in our health office for non-COVID-related illness. We do not want to be mixing kids that might be COVID, have COVID-related illness, who may infect other kids that might be in the health office for medication or other needs that they might have in the health days. We talked about personal protection for students. We now know that masks, masks are required for students in K-12. We find that to be a very welcoming development for schools and providing an added measure of safeguard for all students and staff. Of course, optimizing physical distancing within a feasible manner, hand sanitizer and intravenous solutions for desks, personnel screening at home, enhanced air exchange. We can be proud of the fact that through our bond with, we're trying to nail our work with our schools, updating HVAC systems. I've recently learned, because we've had to talk about this, that we exchange indoor classroom air and typical classroom three times every hour with fresh outdoor air. The concern that COVID may linger in the, in the atmosphere or in the air, we turn the air over every hour two times in a typical classroom with outdoor fresh air. That is a, a big deal with respect to enhancing safety for students and staff. And of course, restrict sharing school supplies among students. Personal protection for staff, again, masks required and provided if needed. Face shields provided. We learned today that M D E and M D H are providing a mask, one mask for every student across the state of Minnesota, and three disposable masks for every student across the state of Minnesota. Same for staff, a face mask will be provided by the state if needed. Many staff have masks, as we have come to understand and know. But also face shields provided by the district and the state of Minnesota for staff that want additional protection. Designated teacher space in classrooms to maintain physical distancing. All the kids get, we need to maintain distancing. Early elementary kids, maybe not so much. So we can actually create designated space that when a teacher is in this space, students do not approach on that space to maintain distance. Hand sanitizer, intravenous solutions for desks and other frequently touched surfaces, again, enhanced air exchange. School building procedures, excess furniture being removed from schools and classrooms that fastly can. We need file cabinets and storage cabinets, but some classrooms tend to gather other materials. We're trying to minimize those classrooms to create as much space as possible. We've already established sneeze shields for building offices administrative assistants, plastic barriers around their workspace. Nightly disinfectant, frequently touched surfaces will happen in all of our schools nightly. Buses will be sprayed with disinfectant after morning and after lunch. Windows left open to area buses. And of course, M D H and CDC guidance if positive COVID case, COVID-19 cases are identified. That leads me to our administrative recommendation. Given the case numbers that we currently have in Anoka, Chisago, and Washington County, administration would recommend that before acts that we adhere to and follow M D E and M D H guidance and protocols for in-person hybrid and distance learning. I would take you back to the parameters for in-person hybrid for distance learning based on case counts. Those would be the parameters and protocols that we would be following based on positive case counts. Currently, as I just showed, even in our most restrictive county, current data would support in-person learning in kindergarten through sixth grade, including early childhood, and hybrid learning in grade seven through twelve. And that we prepare to be directed to provide and support distance learning actions for all students who may need that or want that option. And of course, that we monitor county data and consult with M D H. As school opening model, county-wide data may change. Today is July 30. We have a set of data for the two-week period ending in July 18. I would point out that those numbers have risen slightly over time. We have implemented a mask mandate statewide, hopefully that mitigates positive cases and keeps numbers low. But we will monitor that as we approach the school. But based on current counts, administration recommends in consultation with M D E and M D H, and in accordance with statewide case data, that Forest Lake area school will begin the school year with in-person learning for students in grades K-26, including early childhood, and to begin the school year in grade seven through twelve with a hybrid learning model, and that a full-distance learning action be provided for any student, and that administration be prepared to adjust the opening plan according to case numbers and in consultation with M D H. And that concludes my presentation.
We have a motion to approve the administrative recommendation as read.
Second.
A motion and second discussion.
I, I guess, I just, I have a question. The concern I've had all along, even though I agree with all of this, I think it's a great thing that the state has done. I mean, I think, I think the guidelines are certainly, are certainly helpful. But I have a concern only about Washington County, because that's where the majority of our population is right now. Washington County is the fifth-largest populated county in the state of Minnesota. It encompasses everything from North Forest Lake all the way down to Woodbury, including White Bear, Stillwater, and all those other cities. It's 423 square miles. So my concern is, and, and it's a concern that we continue to monitor locally, because county data in that situation, I've dealt a lot with data, data in that situation, that's an awfully large area to include all that data. So, you know, I, I'm all for this, but I just want to make sure that we, we're aware and that we continue to monitor all of the local numbers, because that's really what counts, is, is our school district parameters and not 423 square miles, although we make up a lot of them.
Well, and remember, Karen, I just, I would say to that is, if I interpret your question in comment, that, that monitoring might reflect high numbers over, low numbers elsewhere, or the counties where there's a high case coming, cottage grow, and maybe not so much. And that's where the response team that the state set up, in consultation with M D H, and we have direct access to those folks who know that data, where we can talk through it. If Washington County metrics spikes, yet it doesn't seem to reflect Forest Lake area in our school population, we hope that if the state were evaluating that on a case-by-case, situation-by-situation basis, and that these are guideposts, not really a plan.
Thank you.
I, I would add to that, though, that if we're continuing sports, that a lot of our team competitions would be all over the rest of Washington County. So we might be up on the northern end, but our basketball team spent the weekend elsewhere. So in the law of averages, we might as well just take the big number. But like Dr. Massey said, still, we still have case-by-case responsibility for our own area. That's why we're here.
I did catch an aspect. We believe that the state high school will be providing guidance at Ellis Grove. And I suspect from everything we have heard from that career, that if there's a high case coming and part cottage grow, we need to get on part cottage grow. And we're scheduled to play in Oak. We may not, if we're playing Oak. So we'll have that level of data available as we're setting teams up across, across our counties and across our counties.
There's already kids that are playing all over the state. Tournaments are happening now.
Yeah, so, I mean, one of the things that I've been really concerned about, like when we looked at last year, is this kind of equity for students. And, you know, you've got a student with both parents that are working and, and out of the house and, and, or a student that struggles. I think it's a real issue of equity in getting every kid. I mean, because we really, we really believe that every kid should get a good education. And I think that I really like how this addresses that. It gets the students in front of a teacher. There's that accountability. There's a relation building, relationship building with the teachers. And so I really like how it's taken, this has taken a smart approach of, you know, having our, you know, K-26, everybody shows up. And, because I think that works best. And, and we, you know, the science really shows that, that they're not the, the big spreaders of the disease. And then through seven through twelve, you know, you're keeping those numbers small, you're keeping the distances as best you can, but you're also making sure that those students are in front of a teacher, which we know works best. And especially, you know, with the kids that struggle. I think they really need that, you know, that, that one-on-one with the teacher, especially the relationship building. Because last year, you know, the kids had already built relationships with those teachers. And that's really going to be tough if we're not able to do this year. And I also want to say I really like the flexibility of this saying that this is how we're going to start the year based on what the conditions we're seeing right now. But if things get better, we can alter it to do better. And if they get worse, we can be more restrictive in how we, we do it. So I really appreciate this plan. And I also, I just want to say how much I appreciate the thoughtful approach the administration has been taking with, with this. It's been frustrating waiting for the state to come out with something. But today, when they came out with something, they showed that they've been taking their time and really taking a thoughtful approach. And so I guess it was worth the wait, my my thinking.
Well, just to add on what Member Ray Field said, I, I had the big hallelujah moment when I heard that we could be using these models, because I think kids have advanced degree. And just to start without needing your staff and your new teacher and having that groundwork, like, would be really, really difficult. And so I was really happy to see that we could get everybody in front of their teachers in the fall. And I'm just super glad that, for parents' sake, that we can be doing that for those that want them. I want to thank all the parents that have called me and reached out to me with their concerns and frustrations. I think it's so important and vital to have them involved if they run that thirty-member panel. And also just thank all of our staff for the strong leadership that we've shown through this whole thing. It's fluid, we'll be hands-on with our answers. So kudos to Member, Member Ray Field. I'm so proud of our district. But I have one question to clarify with Superintendent, going back to Member Pedos. So you talked about those polls that are just, we have three counties being involved. So given that Chisago might be high, we can still go with Washington County because that's the bigger, bigger majority of our student population?
That is not real clear in the guidance as of yet. I'm going on the governor's coming, that these are guideposts, and the staff at M D H, one with our staff, will work case-by-case, situation-by-situation to address anomalies or unique situations that might develop in the district. If you think about Anoka County, we've got just a couple of schools in Anoka County. And our Columbus residents might be in the least populated part of Anoka County. And if Anoka County spikes high, that may not be a concern for our district as a whole or our schools in Anoka County. But we would get guidance and clearance, clarity, I should say, from M D H on how best to proceed given the high number that might show up in particular county.
That's good to know, that we have that flexibility. I think, I also want to thank the administration and all the people that really helped get this plan together. I think it's really thoughtful and having that calendar set up right away in the event, especially for the elementary that might have to go virtual. So that, I think that's great. I just had a question regarding busing, kind of wondering how that's going to work. And also the staffing, is it still going to be lower ratio, students to staff? I want, I just wonder if that was clarified with this comment.
The all-in-person model would not necessarily result in smaller classes. I want to keep in mind that some families may like this concerning, meaning that if a grade classroom with fewer kids than, or typically show up and, and, and it's difficult to learn. But we need staff to work within the distance learning, not. So we'll be shifting staff based on their need not to be, their need to be out of school, and then matching students in this frame with those. So we don't believe that in, in-person learning, that more class sizes is the objective or the end result it may have in a case, some situation. But that's what we're not occurring there. The hybrid model, the numbers of kids coming in and the in-person data, the state teacher center. So the number is getting reduced by half. In, we have at home, and that's at the room goal of the council. With respect to buses, we're running, we anticipate if we have kids coming to school, in-person or hybrid, we're running a typical bus route for annual district recommendation based on members today. The elementary route will have a typical number of kids on buses. We will invite families if they're concerned about that to carpool or drive their own kids to school, and we'll work on traffic patterns and traffic flows the best we can while they're there. For the hybrid model at the secondary level, same routes, have the kids. If we're hybrid across the board at some point, same routes, have the kids lower on a, on the in-person basis.
And one more question regarding temperature. Anyway, because this is not an incumbent business, they take your temperatures, the, you know, the model they take. Is that something we're going to start with kids coming in? Or, I know that's a health question, but I just, just so parents understand.
Our plan is not to be checking temperatures for every student. Will be ready immediately in the health office to check temperature if needed. We're asking parents to be doing that at home before they send the kids. We'll give them the chat posts, the guidance, reminders, encouragement to be doing that.
Yes, I just, that was something I, I know my business and all the small are doing that. So I just wanted that expectation. Thank you. And thank you for the presentation. This was a really good distillation of what we did as a team and also what the governor discussed today. But talking about some of the, the tail ends of the spectrum of what we need, can you address how special age kids and those who are severely lacking the internet, how we might accommodate both groups there?
Yep. I'll take the special education question first. And I would include in that students who receive English language services. You can't presume most kids are coming every day and their I P's are valid as if we want in, in that matter. If at some point in the year or If at some point in the year or in a hybrid or in the secondary for hybrid and they're coming every other day, an I E P team might decide that a particular student needs to come every day. And we would accommodate. Same for an English language, one in student. If we know that that student coming every day is necessary, we would accommodate. And it's, and caution us not to conclude that all special ed kids need it. Many kids need supports around their learning, whether in-person or distance. And we will make that determination on case-by-case student through their I E P. I'm trying to remember the secondary.
Internet, the handful of kids that not even have a spot will do.
That is a challenge. We, every student will have a device seven through twelve, their own device or a device we provide. They'll need to bring that device to school because their learning platform is Canvas, whether they're at home or in the classroom. So they'll need to bring that back and forth in their bookcase. The challenge will be those remote parts of our community that are unreliable, meaning that connected. We did purchase last year an additional hotspots this year, but not a perfect solution. We will work side by side with families to explore all options some areas of communities have. Brands that families can apply to, we'll work case by case and do our best to support those families.
I just want to say thank you to the committee and administration for formulating such a comprehensive plan. You answered all of my questions. It is very fluid and I think we are going to be able to meet the needs of any student because we are giving them options and no family should, you know, have any problems if they don't want to send their kid, then distance learning is available. I do have a question about the hybrid model. Will we have gold and maroon teachers so that there's some consistency for those groups?
No, so the idea is if I run a fourth-grade teacher at Neil's Building at Columbus and I've got twenty-six, twenty-seven students, let's say twenty-eight students, fourteen come on in-person day to me, and then on the gold day, the other fourteen come in. And I'm building their extensions, their pre-teaching, their review as a companion to what I'm doing during the school day.
Okay, that makes sense.
Although that school would be K six.
That'd be K six, or maybe not the best example. But if I had K P's school and at the middle school, same thing. I might have thirty-four students first hour, seventeen are coming on in-school days, seventeen are at home at the same time. I provided in Canvas what the learning looks like and kids would do those extensions, pre-teach, pre-learning enrichments on their home days. And then also use Canvas for the in-days. And that's through Canvas. I'll access my lecture notes, my PowerPoints, my videos that are also available to kids anytime that you were, especially in the...
A quick question, are we asking our distant students or choosing distance learning to identify by a certain date in order to get that set up?
Yeah, we'll be communicating with families right away and asking them to, one, or share the model. But also ask them to indicate through a survey if they are lacking or need the distance learning option. We'll certainly put an expected timeline on when we need to see that information. But quite frankly, if that comes two, three days before school, we'd do our best to serve that student at home. Yeah, we'll need that data as quickly as possible, for sure.
I just want to make a statement. I want to recognize the teachers and the staff in our schools. Personally, my mom was a teacher her whole life. Two of my kids followed her and became teachers. So teachers for me are a very personal thing. And I want to recognize the teachers and especially the staff that are in the schools. And especially because they have been identified as frontline workers. And I think that's a huge thing because truly they are. And I think we all have to recognize that the teachers also have families. So they're taking extreme risks in some cases going into the class. But that's all right because they accept that responsibility. So I just want to recognize the teachers and the staff that go to the schools.
Due to the increased safety precautions that you laid out, will we need to hire more native staff?
We're not anticipating the need to do that. We believe with our current staff and their emphasis and focus on making sure frequently cut spaces are disinfected, that they'll be able to do that on a monthly basis. We envision having disinfectant material spray bottles on the buses for one, where bus drivers will spray down buses if they finish a route. In a similar fashion, a spray bottle will be available in classrooms. We would ask if teachers could to spray down class desks and sinks or other frequently cut spaces before they finish their day and leave for the day. We've had some conversation with teachers testing whether or not that was an undue that's an overburdened some expectation. We think that's a matter of minutes to wipe through the room and spray. And that would go a long ways to helping to school.
Sorry, and then I've had the benefit of, I think, seven times to ask a million questions in doing this. Speaking more towards what we were given today from the government and how we're written the resolution to follow it, this is almost a dream come true. I know a lot of people are annoyed that it took all summer to get, you guys get to decide. But I think there's greater value to the goalposts that are given, that are based in science, that are based in numbers, that are available to all of us. And that every district can work from the same general metric. So there will not be a gigantic difference between neighboring districts based on who shouted the loudest in their constituency. So Minnesota can be mostly equal as much as possible. So I appreciate that we're using a scientific-based metric that we did not have to make up ourselves because we're all professionals, but none of us are doctors. So we will gladly use the guidance. And I appreciate that that's how it was written as a resolution, that we will continue to follow the guidance as it was given, using our best judgments as a moderating force. And also to add, there was one discussion from the government, the governor's thing today about schools that have very small classrooms or falling of our infrastructure for poor air quality. And I'm really happy to say that those are things we don't have to worry about here. So when they say you can make a more restrictive choice, that is giving those schools the option to have a choice because their buildings can't support the more in-person learning. And it's been stated every single meeting how good our air quality is and how thankful everyone is that bond came through what it did. Because there would be no possible way to rush it between now and September, no matter what we did.
So we can thank her community.
Yes, thank her community, again.
I just wanted to add that my concern with the cleaning protocols, it just seems like once a day washing down touchpoints in an elementary building. I'm just curious if that would be sufficient.
Yeah, I mean, it's a fair question. And the spray bottle will be available. There will be lights available, as you see at the table or here in the district office in classrooms. Custodians are, custodians will be cleaning bathrooms and drinking pumps throughout the hall. Let me say that drinking pumps. Water refill stations are open, but drinking pumps will not be open. The frequently touched areas will be cleaned by custodians. And teachers will be able to wipe down. But that's the end benefit of the elementary level, keeping cohorts of kids confined so there's little interaction from these.
I guess I'd be more comfortable if I knew the custodial staff were cleaning the desks. But we can, I mean, I think teachers are busy things today. And I think we don't want that to get forgotten or missed. If, you know, they do have a special busy day. So just for consistency's sake, if they started out, I'd love to see the custodials performing that. But I know it's all on me if we have enough.
Yeah, I'm not so sure that this plan is, because we don't have enough, what am I to get by with this? I've learned a lot since we've been addressing COVID. One of the things I've learned is that the spray solution we use has a sit time, a dwell time. And in some cases, it's two minutes or less, and it totally takes care of that surface. So that's the power and benefit of spraying down the desk. It doesn't need to be clean and light as long as that product dwells to that required amount.
So just simply a spray. Thanks for that clarification.
Dr. Massey, how do we intend on handling lunchtime both at elementary and then conversely at the middle school and high school?
At the middle school, we're doing grab and go, breakfast and lunch throughout the district. So they're at least to start. Once we get that under wraps, I think food service would be willing to point person or hybrid. See if they can pull out hot meals, but we start with grab and go meals. Those will be delivered to classrooms or to kids in the cafeteria at the table which is going through a line. Cafeterias will only be used if we properly space kids. And it might be a combination of classroom and cafeteria. Keep in mind, we have supervised kids who are in the noon hour. It's the time when staff are a part of their duty through lunch and part-time. We certainly want to come for that. But it'll be a combination of classrooms and lunchroom to grab and go.
And like I said, how about recess? Like I'm sure you guys have discussed all the options for gym and all those different options.
I will say that for recess, we'll be going out as a classroom. They will be given the best guidance we can to stay together, to play together in that neutral type of classes. It just sounds awful to have to say that because that's the situation we're in. So we'll be guiding and directing our kids to do that. Biatic same, there'll be classroom-based, by a teacher will pick the kids up so they don't mix into the halls. Music might be done in a classroom versus a common choir room or music room. Our music staff, I would point out, have done incredible work researching how through universities across the country, they're implementing guidances on how to do vocal music or instrumental music at the elementary or at the secondary level. There are some really impressive guidance being developed. So that would be continuing to give kids an opportunity to do what they, in some cases, maybe the one thing they get out of bed and wanting to come do, and that's quite very interesting. So we really want to provide those opportunities with us.
Just one, just a couple things. One, I do want to hope the staff understands that as a board, we understand that this is going to be a lot of work. I mean, this is going to be, people, it's a big deal and it's going to be tough. And it's, people are really going to have to rise up to it. And I just want to kind of go into it knowing that that's going to be the case. And as a board, you know, that we'll do whatever we can to support that and acknowledge it, I guess. The other thing too is that before we go to a vote, could we just read the motion a second time when we go to a vote, just so that if people come in later in the video, they'll see what the actual result is.
Any further discussion? The motion on the floor is to approve the administration recommendation that in consultation with M D E, M D H guidance and in accordance with statewide case data, that F L Forest Lake area schools begin the school year with in-person learning for students in grades K six, including early childhood education, and to begin the school year in grades seven through twelve with a hybrid learning model. And that full-distance learning option be provided for any student. And that the administration be prepared to adjust the opening plan according to the case numbers and in consultation with Minnesota Department of Health. So with that said, all those in favor of approving the administration's recommendation?
Could I call for a?
Certainly. All right, member clerk, would you please take a roll call vote?
Member Olson, aye. Olson votes aye, member Rayfield.
Aye.
Rayfield votes aye, member Tyson.
Aye.
Tyson votes aye, member Peterson.
Aye.
Peterson votes aye, member Luzner votes aye. Member Perkin, aye. Member Perkin votes aye, member Ketta.
Aye.
Or Ketta votes aye.
Motion passes. Seeing nothing further on our agenda, a motion to adjourn would be in order?
So?
Second.
Motion is second, all those in favor of adjournment?
Aye.